Um, we're here to talk about the dog pound.
Who's?
Tara.
Tara, okay. You're, you're?
Tara. Tara, Tara, I know, it's confusing. Um, well, we want to talk about when we first got involved, which was the end of June after everything that happened. I spoke with Mayor Baker a couple of times, saying, "I would love to help, let me know what I can do because I have animals, I love animals, and I would love to help bring positivity to our community and to our pound." Um, and then he gave me a call and offered me a key, and I was very appreciative and happy to help in any way that I could. Um, when we got there, whenever we got to Key, we didn't care what the pound needed. Um, they needed toys, there was no toys. They needed stimulation such as walk, they needed leashes, they needed collars. Um, and like treats for encouragement, you can't just do dogs, you need to give them treats until they did a good job. I mean, you don't know where these dogs came from, you've got to give them a chance, you've got to work with them. Um, and then we also seen that the food containers were rusting, the water containers had rust in them, and this is after the whole debacle that happened, that should have been changed. Um, they also, you also didn't have the correct cleaning supplies that would kill parvo, which is kinsol, bleach will not kill it. It's kennel salt, sorry. Um, and then the water hose was just shooting everywhere. So, we decided, Tara and I decided, how can we get our community involved? Well, how else? With social media, right? That's how you get everything going. So, we created a Facebook page called Campbell Peach Pups, and we later changed it to Peachy Pups and Kittles. We just kind of liked that name better. Um, so, the first thing we did was post pictures of the dogs at the pound to help people if that's their dog claiming, because it's not posted anymore, and we don't understand why there's not a Facebook page saying, "Hey, we caught this dog today, does this belong to anybody?" Because half the community doesn't even know where the pound is. You have no idea how many people ask where the pound is. And I've also asked, should we put a sign out there? And Mayor Baker said, "For their safety, no." But, which we respect, but how do we get, we've got to have some way to let these people know these animals have been caught, right? Social media. So, it's not on the Campbell page, so we said, "Let's create one." And we did that, and we also was able to work with the dogs, we created videos, leash playing with them to show, you know, how they act, how they act. Um, let's see. Do you want to go ahead and talk about the farmer's market and the raffle?
So, back in July, we, during the farmer's market, uh, me and a friend of mine, Caitlin Arnold, we sat at a booth and we raised like the fifty-figure raffle to, you know, be able to buy the dog supplies that they needed, like a new water hose, which ended up-
Somebody donated.
Someone ended up donating an industrial water hose, but we bought leashes and toys and collars, ones to be given.
Uh, containers for the food in, um, we've got pictures too that we'll pass around.
The winner of the raffle, who ended up donating her half to the dog pound, so-
We continue to buy more and more supplies, which we have pictures to show everything that we bought.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, yeah, they're over there, y'all want to start looking at them? Um, we had people even getting on our page and wanting to help so much, and they were sending supplies to us for animals. I mean, we're talking beds, um, toys, um, Tara, what else? I mean, it was just an array of things.
Cots, toys, leashes, collars, cleaner-
Cleaning supplies.
Fans.
Fans, yes, industrial fans, which is another concern of ours, we have yet to see them there at the pound. My fan that I loaned until we got those fans is still there, and so is Lisa Murphy's. Um-
That we know of.
That we know of. I mean, as you can see inside, it's not near the six feet of the dogs, so they're not there. I'm just saying. Um, and then after Buddy, everybody knows who Buddy is, I'm sure.
Who's?
He's the, what would you call him? He looks like a lab mix, jail lab mix.
What is that, Rita?
Yes. Well, with what happened with Buddy is, I would like to make it clear that I was not there because there's rumors saying that I was there and I let them in, but-
We know who Buddy is.
Yes. But I just want to make it clear that I was not there when Buddy bit those two people. I was, I got a call at nine o'clock at night with Lisa freaking out about, "Oh, my God, Tara, this just happened. Buddy just bit this grandmother and her granddaughter," you know? And so I said, "Okay, calm down, if you need me, call me." And I said, "Would you like me to put a sign out saying, you know, employees and volunteers only?" Because we knew Randall was about to leave, to go on vacation, you know? And my husband said, "Well, go ahead and text the mayor and make sure he's okay with you putting a sign on the door." And he said, "No, hold off." And then he had spoken to his lawyer, and it was best if we just viewed the dogs, you know, not touch them, but view them for, you know, because only city officials need to touch them for insurance purposes, so we respected that. Um, let's see. But we did continue to collect supplies, we continued to take pictures from afar because you can zoom in with the phone, of the dogs to try to keep the community knowing what's going on, that our dogs are there. And we actually have worked with a rescue that has helped save a lot of these dogs that are here, we made great contacts. Um, let's see. And we did continue even after what happened with the dog bite, and we continued to text with Lisa and let her know, like, we had supplies to give her. And, um, we also would let her know, somebody would message us on our Peach Pup page, you know, if somebody said, "Hey, there's a dog loose in my yard." We were keeping her informed, because Lisa did not have a phone number at this time. She said that she was going to eventually get her own phone, is what we would hope, she didn't have one at the time. So, um, you want to go ahead and tell them what happened with you and Lisa, go ahead.
So, uh, when I wanted to call, I probably said, "Hey, Tara, answer the phone." And people were getting mad at us because we couldn't go up to the dog, that wasn't our place, so-
We tried it, we did make it very clear on our page that we do not work for the city, we are just volunteers, we already said that several times.
But, and Lisa told me to play on her, and that she, and I wanted to contact her during business hours, but wouldn't give us business hours.
That's what she told you?
That's what she told me, Tara, I wasn't involved.
And I never touched it. And then you called her about the dogs?
And the dogs were, sorry, there were some dogs that were left in my friend's yard, she-
Over on Pollard, right?
Yeah, over on Pollard, and she was leaving town, so I told her I'd stay out there with the dogs while she had to leave, because she couldn't leave them there because they were tearing up her yard. And I called Lisa, said she could have taken to the police station. And so when I did that, she got upset with me, saying that she never said that, and that she, I remember that she lost her dog. I don't remember my attention in any way, shape, or form, she just kept saying that it was my fault and that-
And this is a seventeen-year-old, by the way?
Yeah, I'm seventeen, and she was just saying that it's all my fault, that I should have never done that. But I, I had asked her what to do, and she told me to take her to the police station. And I begged her to help me.
What do you do? You do what she tells you to do.
Yeah, I did what she told me to do, and she just kept waiting.
Um, and then after that, I guess that's one thing that's out between us and Lisa. Because I guess, I don't know if we got her in trouble or not, but she did what she was wanting to do. I was at work, I wasn't even having anything to do with it. Um, so, when we would get supplies, I would contact Lisa, and I couldn't meet her till I got off work. I work in home health, and I don't get off work sometimes six, seven o'clock at night, it just depends on the client. So, I could only meet her in the evenings, because half the time I went to work at seven. So, I guess you got frustrated too that our timeline didn't work with her. But-
She wanted to spend time with her grandkids.
She wanted to spend time with her grandkids, this was not a, supposed to be a full-time job, was what she told us, and-
And she was like supposed to work twenty-eight hours a week, and that was it?
Yeah.
And she should decide how, what days she worked.
And what time. So, we were trying to work with her, but she would never give us a schedule. So, I mean, we didn't know what to do, but we had all these amazing items that y'all can see that came in. Um, so, the last set of, our, our last interaction with Lisa was actually with me and my husband.
I was there.
Um, we had, that's the big one with industrial fans in it. And I texted her and told her, "Great news, those industrial fans came in." Um, and I've actually got the text, if anybody wants to see them, they're on my phone. Um, "Great news, industrial fans came in, can I meet you when I get off work?" And she said, "Yes," but she wanted me to meet her at Casey's, and to me, that doesn't sound appropriate. Uh, she wanted me to meet her at Casey's, and I actually said, I said, "No, the dog pound is closer to my house," which it is, I live over on Speedway. And I had to go back home to get more Amazon packages that had came in from my house. And when I got there, I text her, "I'm here," and she goes, "Where are you at?" And I said, "I'm at the pound." So, we had it all nicely displayed, because we like to take photos of all our donations and post them, and thank everybody for their donations. Um, and she got pretty upset with me about us trying to contact her a lot, but like I said, we never got set hours.
And we did know what-
And they were donations, and we didn't want to hold on to them, they didn't belong to us, they belonged to the pound. Um, and she said, she was aggravated that she had inventory, everything that she had. She goes, "I've got inventory, all this stuff, I don't have anywhere to put it, and I've already got rolled up," is what she said. She already got rolled up by, who is it that comes out? Department of Ag, I think, came out and rolled her up for having stuff on the floor. And she was aggravated.
We didn't know that that was a violation.
Yeah, we didn't know, it was just our donations, and we just gave them to her. So, after we heard she got rolled up in our last haul, we, I actually got her, um, the tubs, shelving, and all that, to kind of help store those donations, and there's also lofts up there inside the pound that I figured she could use to put, you know, the totes in, and the shelving, she could have put the cleaning supplies on. So, we were trying to help accommodate as best as we could with what money we had. Um, but she got mad at me, and I guess she, she can call it me the reason, I don't know, because she told me maybe I don't have as much passion as you do about the dog pound. And I said, "Lisa, you can't do this job alone," and I said, "If you don't have the passion, maybe you need to find something else." Because you have to be passionate about taking care of animals. And she, um, said, "Yeah, you're right, I'm going to think about that." And she started, she started throwing the supplies in her car, and you can ask my husband, he was there, he watched her throw them in her car. I didn't even know how they were going to fit, because they, my minivan was full. And she made us just stuff them in her car, and we would like to know where those supplies are, because they've yet to be out there-
That we know of.
That we know of, I mean-
And if they're out there, correct us, we don't mind, we're not trying to deceive anybody.
Yeah.
But all we want is the best.
And all our donors are wanting to know where their donations are. And also, Mr. Baker, we've tried to contact you a few times, and we haven't yet been called back. And we're not really sure where things went wrong with us, with you. Um, let's see. But I mean, we honestly have the animals' best interest at heart, and that's what we're trying to do. We feel like these animals need volunteers, one person cannot do it alone. These dogs should be, I feel like need to be worked with leashes.
And you're willing to sign waivers, Tara?
Yes. We would sign waivers as volunteers that the city is not liable for you to hurt.
What if you got hurt, what if you, uh, had a dog, and it got loose from you and attacked a child, then what are you going to do?
Well, that's why we've been working with Home Depot, trying to get a fence. I mean, we had all this going, and then nobody would answer our calls, so we quit working. I mean, they, Home Depot said, "It'll take a while," but they were working on it.
Are they, were they going to give the materials to you?
Yes, yes. And there's pictures of us already starting to work with them, uh, Home Depot.
And it's on our Facebook page too.
Because, I mean, that's, that's a big odd, you know what I mean?
Oh, I understand.
We were trying to get like the whole area, like, fenced in. That way, they have, not only can they run one at a time, but that way you can work with them without the fear of it being-
Right. Because they're going to go, you're going to go stir crazy in that little mini pen, if you're in there, you know, even more than a week. They've got to have that leash, they've got to be able to at least walk and get exercise. I would go crazy in that small confined area, and I can imagine an animal would as well.
Okay, Tom, it's, uh, um, thank you for your comments, and, uh, Will, uh, Ann Walker, you want to speak? You can speak at this time.
Thank you for your help.
Thank you, Tara. And thank you for your help the other day.
Anytime you do, I'm so happy to be here. And we have, I have, I have made pictures, I have pictures.
I'll look at them sometime, but I'll-
I got pictures, and you can have, or you have, she really comes up with them.
Great, great.
Okay, I was at the June when, uh, sandwich was supposed to come down, and we had a holiday, and they just, we, you informed us that they just forgot it was a holiday, that you were in contact with them, and it wouldn't be long, and we would have another meeting. We've not heard anything on that, not nothing have we heard. In that meeting, we discussed the care for the animals, and just like she said, the volunteers. I do understand that to a certain extent, but I live close to the pound, and I see, I have seen city workers out there mowing the grass, I see two young boys, they're mowing the grass, and they're walking the dog. Or whatever, I've seen with one dog. But, to me, that can be a liability, a big liability for the city. Also, like it would be you or me. But, my question is, I've seen all this stuff donated for the animals, and we were told that we were going to make improvements, and we all volunteered, we said, "We'll do whatever we can." I go out there, and the only thing I see different, I'm not saying nothing else is, the only thing I see difference is there's a fence up around the dog pit, and a sign that said, "No trespassing." We don't know, this hot weather we've had recently, we don't know if the dogs has been cared for. You know yourself, concrete gets hot fast. Was their water cold, or was it hot? I'm an animal lover, and I'll do anything for my animals. But we all know that with an animal, a dog, you can take, it's just like a child. You take a child that's been abused or neglected, you just can't go in there in five minutes and expect that child to be okay. You've got to work with those dogs, you've got to care for them. And you can't go in there and just throw them in there and not do anything. We found that out with Buddy, did we not? We found out that with a little love and care, he'd become a better dog. And that's my point. We want answers, we get no answers. We were told that we would get someone, we would talk to the council, and we would try to get things done. That we would try and get, get a pen up. Remember? We were going to get a big pen up for the dogs. And that we would make their lives better, that no animal would be killed. We would, and one guy stood up, and he said, "Okay, what if you're overcrowded? What if something happens?" He said, "I will do my best to get that animal replaced. I will do everything if the animal," he said, "Okay, well, if an animal is hurt and needs a vet, I will do my best if I have to take it myself." I've been told, I don't know if this is true or not, but I've been told there's been two animals shot and killed. I don't know if they were shot, but two of them. And I've been told that they have one out there now that is been hurt. It's got a bad leg and has skin sores. I don't know, I've not seen them myself. But my question is, if that is true, what happened? Are meeting there in July meant nothing? We talked, when we had this other lady up there, a friend of mine, we talked about for the, to doing things, doing stuff like these young girls done, go in there and do something to earn money, to provide, to help for the extra necessities for the animals. Then my friend, we talked about, she said, "Well, I can do some, like a bake sale." And I said, "Well, I have a quilt that I can put up for auction, or sale, buy tickets on, and we'll do that at the Peach Fair," but there we found this. It fell through, we, we've got nothing, we don't know. And so, we go by hearsay. If someone posts something on Facebook and it ain't so, we believe it, because that's all we know, because we hear nothing from you all. You understand what I'm saying? And it aggravates us. Because whether you love an animal or you don't love an animal, you have a city pound out there, and it is a responsibility to take care of them to the best you can. You know? I know I would be a rescuer if my husband would let me, but he said, "And you will have every dog that you ever rescued." You know, I've got a little kitten there now, don't know where it came from, but I went to town, I got, went to the vet, and I bought some worm medicine, and he said, "What are you going to do with that cat?" I said, "I will love it." And that's the way I am. He won't let me have it anymore, but I would have it, and I'd take it care of it. They're my babies, whether they're mine or not, they're mine, you know, I take good care of them. And that's all I wanted to know, I wanted answers. You know, like all the stuff these young girls have done, I heard they were sitting up here at City Hall, you could go in here and see them. I don't know, I don't know if they were, no, if they were fans, and I think maybe some food in there. You know, but what about the dogs? And when they burn the wood out there, what about those dogs? That smoke is so bad, we live right there across from it, and sometimes it's so bad, you, it's, you know, it's just really bad. But then the dogs are having to breathe that, I can run in my house, they have no place to go unless they go in that one little room. But, that's not it, that's, that's my bribe, you know? Uh, we just want answers. We want to know, at the dogs, why the dogs were killed, why they were not sent somewhere to try to rehabilitate. I can understand if the dog nipped it, nicked a person, bit them, or if the dog bit them, you know? I can understand that, if you've got a killer dog. But if you've got a dog that nipped someone, you know, maybe they're aggravating it, or whatever the reason. Or if it broke its chain and tried to kill somebody, that's, that's a little bit different. But we just like to, we just want answers. We want someone to put a page up, like we discussed, where they pick a dog up. You put it up on Facebook, "I picked this dog up on College Street." "I picked this dog up on July the fourth." Anybody, does it belong to someone? Post a picture of it. Okay, here comes July the eighth, nobody's got it. Then here comes July the tenth, that's my dog. We also discussed if your dog, maybe if your dog got out the first time, we would wait, you know, the fee. Because a lot of old folks got dogs, and they can't pay that fee, but that's their life. We also discussed letting that dog slide the first time, but when you took them, the dog home, or they picked it up, you say, "This is first time free, the second time's going to cost you." Because I know a lot of people that let their dog out and it just runs, and they don't think nothing of it. And the dog may travel in your yard, or it may travel two yards, two miles down the road, but it comes home. So, my point is, we need answers. You know, and would it be too hard for someone here, or you get someone to set up a page and let us see those dogs? And let us know, you know, I, they help, but they have responsibilities too. And they're not part of the city, they're part of volunteers, which I would help too. But, I would think that there's someone that you could appoint to snap those pictures, like whoever picks it up. I thought you would keep a log, I think we even discussed keeping a log on where the dog was picked up. I don't know, we don't know nothing. So, but that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Jim. Anybody else, don't comment.
Comments?
Anyone that hasn't had their opportunity?
What does it cost to have a, uh, animal officer, main officer? What's all that cost, financially, from a tax, from a taxation standpoint? What does it cost the city to do all of that?
Well, I've never done an analysis of that.
Okay, I'm just curious, I didn't know if you guys knew off the top of your head what it cost, and just-
Now, is everyone finished? Because I'm going to make my comments, and I'm going to give the, uh, all the women opportunities to make comments, and then we're moving on.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Uh, do we know if there's going, when there's going to be a new, uh, dog catcher appointed?
I'm going to make my comments, if all of you all are done, I'm going to make my comments.
But I was wrong on the question.
And I'd just like to know where I went wrong while we quit communicating, and that's mine.
As mayor, I'm happy to announce that with the support and backing of the Board of Alderman, and the support and help of all of the city employees, the Campbell Dog Pound received a one-hundred percent rating on the last surprise inspection we had, which was about a month ago. We had zero non-conformance issues and were one-hundred percent in conformance with Missouri Department of Agriculture regulations. The inspector complimented us on how quickly we had gotten back to this standing. She said we have done above and beyond what is required by their regulations, and wish that all the smaller towns in this area could reach the same status we have. The dogs are fed and watered at least twice per day, and the pens cleaned at least twice per day. During the hot weather, the dogs had air conditioning and fans, and the inside temperature was kept at the below eighty-five degree requirement by Missouri Department of Agriculture. The police department received a call late Tuesday morning, September the fifth, that there was a dog at Express Food Mart that seemed to have been hit by a car. I personally immediately sent two street department employees to get the dog and bring him to me, so I could put him in the, put him in the truck and transport him to the veterinarian at Malden. I asked the vet, Dr. Bill Emery, to examine him and tell me what he needed. The vet examined the dog and said he had a head injury. He said the dog's leg injury was an old injury and nothing recent, and not associated with the head injury he received that morning. The vet gave me a prescription for an antibiotic and a painkiller and a fourteen-day supply of each. And the vet said the dog should be fine within that time period. I brought the dog back, and we placed him in one of the kennels at the pound on a bed with plenty of food and water, and administered the medication. The dog has air conditioning and a fan. I checked on him several times that afternoon and evening, and he was resting comfortably. The painkiller was helping him rest. The dog will be kept for the prescribed five days, and after that, a rescue will be contacted to see, see if they can take him. His medications are being administered daily as prescribed by the veterinarian. He is in much better shape than the first day and seems to be improving as each day passes. And actually, as of this morning, a lovely couple has asked to adopt the dog, and plans are being made for them to take the dog after the five-days holding period required by the state. There was no skin condition on the dog. The dog had the head injury, and that was all, but no skin conditions. It is the city's desire that none of the dogs at the pound be euthanized. However, there are circumstances where euthanization is required and necessary. Recent euthanizations of two pit bulls were necessary as the owners would not do what was necessary to retrieve their dogs from the pound and fulfill the requirements that were ordered by the court. The dogs had been impounded because they had broken loose and bitten a young girl. The dogs were unprovoked, but broke loose and bit the girl who was merely walking down the street. While at the veterinarian a couple of days later, meaning the day that we were, uh, adopting out Buddy, the statement was made that those two bulldogs that were put to sleep the other day, that one of them was real nice and gentle. The lady who works at the vet's office chimed in and asked, "Are you talking about those two pit bulls from Campbell that were put to sleep the other day?" The young girl said, "Yes." The lady who works in the vet's office said, quote, "No, you're wrong about that. Those dogs were pure hell back there in our room. They were nothing but pure hell," unquote. And they were sedated even at that, when they were taken back to the room. The dog we all know as Buddy was scheduled to be euthanized, but someone came forward and offered to adopt him the evening before he was to be euthanized the next morning. The adopter was made aware of his bite history and signed forms relieving the city of any responsibility to her or her family or anyone else should they be bitten by Buddy. The office staff searched and searched for two months to find an agency that would take Buddy and work with him through his problems. No rescue would take him, and there was no agency that works with special needs dogs that would take him. Rescues and other dog agencies are overwhelmed. They cannot take the animals even though they badly want to. It's been reported to us by state agencies that people in the cities bring their dogs to rural areas and release them in hopes they will have a better chance of surviving in a rural area. These actions by those people are overwhelming our area. While the city will do what we can to see that the dogs we pick up are adopted, are sent to rescues, there will be times some dogs will have to be euthanized. A second meeting concerning the Dog Pound has not been set yet. I have had a very busy summer and will not set a meeting until I know for sure I can be at the meeting. I am still doing research and checking with other pounds on how they keep their animals and improvements they have made. I will be contacting my friend Julie Christopherson and reschedule the meeting at a convenient time for both the city, Julie, and her volunteers. The city will post the date and time and place of this new meeting on the city's Facebook page. No individual calls will be made. I have not yet accepted the resignation of Humane Officer Lisa Brune Murphy. Lisa was doing a great, terrific job and was excited about the job and working with the dogs and helping the dogs. She was overwhelmed by circumstances that were not her fault and resigned under stress while I was on a cruise. The humane officer is a city employee and is appointed by the mayor with the approval of the Board of Aldermen. When I feel the time is right, if Ms. Brune does not keep the job, I will appoint a humane officer of my choosing. In the meantime, myself and city staff will continue as we are now doing. For the city's protection, as there is a high level of liability to the city with people sticking their hands in the kennels, no trespassing signs will be posted at the pound. Anyone trespassing beyond those signs will be prosecuted. The Dog Pound is not an animal shelter, and it is not a rescue. We are a dog pound. Most of the dogs that are... That are in there are strays, and we do not know their history. They may have a propensity to bite, or they may have diseases that we are not aware of. This is too much of a liability for the city, so no trespassing signs will be posted and enforced. People are feeding the dogs table scraps and other items which are causing loose bowels and diarrhea. Toys are being pushed through the gates, and the dogs are tearing them apart and eating the stuffing, which is showing up in their stools and which is dangerous to their health. And when the kennels are clean, the stuffing they have in their stool clogs the sewer lines. The city is not soliciting donations for the Dog Pound. That was made very clear from the beginning. If you have made a donation, you should contact the person who took your donation. The city is not accepting volunteer help at this time. We will discuss at a later time if we are going to accept volunteers. If we do in the future, we will institute a vetting process for volunteer help. The items that were donated are stored at the street department shed. Anyone who donated wishing those items returned, we will be happy to return those items. Concerning my not returning a phone call, I returned all phone calls I received during the Dog Pound crisis that first week in June. I return all phone calls as I can. Many times, the caller has left a wrong phone number, or they do not answer my return call. If the message says, "Please return phone call," I do my best to do that. The phone call in question this evening did not say, "Please return phone call." I was told the caller was checking on the dogs to make sure they were cool during the hot weather, and she was assured they were. Also, I was told the caller was concerned that she had not been notified of the second meeting concerning the Dog Pound. The caller was told the meeting has not been set yet and that the public will be notified when that meeting is set. If Julie Christopherson and her volunteers are still willing to help us and still want to meet, a notice of that second meeting will be announced on the city's Facebook page. However, that being said, I do not do Facebook. I was hacked a few years ago, and I do not correspond on Facebook. If I make a comment as mayor, some news medias have been known to take comments out of context, so I will not make comments on that media. My obligations to run the city involve a whole lot more than just the Dog Pound. While right now, the Dog Pound is one of my top priorities, it is not my only obligation to the city. We are doing what we can, and it is working. We will continue on our current course in our current operation of the Dog Pound as this course of action is proving successful. Okay. Carrie, Paige, do either of you have any comments?
Yeah, I do. Um... Carrie, you know, I'm a huge, huge animal lover. I give... I got two mama cats outside that are not mine, but I feed them water twice a day. I give them ice water. I will take... I would take... If my husband would let me, I would take every one of them in. But it's not possible. You know, sometimes things in life, we want the best, just like we wanted the best for Buddy. And I pray that everything works out for him and he doesn't attack little girl. And where I'm going with this is, we had a puppy we picked up a couple of years ago on the road. Little puppy, on a dead-end road. Right to that dog. The dog killed my little dog in two seconds. Attacked my other dog, then attacked me. I did everything I could to try to find that dog a place to go. Sometimes dogs are just bad. There was nothing that we did. We worked physical. We didn't beat it. It loved my husband. If I walked toward the bathroom and my husband was in the bathroom, that dog was sitting right there, protecting it, and would growl at me. So we ended up having to put that dog down, and I just... It tore my heart out. But sometimes, and we're doing... We're doing the best that we can.
Yeah, but with Buddy, the story, they went inside the pound, and Lisa told Kara that she was hoping they would go away, so she kept cleaning the outside of the pound. This is their phone conversation. And they slipped in while she was cleaning the outside of the pound.
Well, I... You know, I'm just saying...
No, I'm just saying, but Buddy was cornered. And even her... She goes to school with a girl that was bit. They've talked several times about the occurrence.
And, you know, we went through different avenues too. We were going to have to hire a private, uh, somebody privately to work with our dog. But, you know, that's how far I went. And whenever I was talking to them, they said, "You're really wasting your money." Now...
We understand some dogs can't be saved.
Some of them can't be saved, and that's what I'm trying to say here. We're trying to do the best that we can.
And I am too, and Mayor Baker still didn't answer why he's been ignoring my calls.
Well, let me... Let me finish what I'm saying first. Um... As far as the... We're talking about the bleach daycare park.
Yes, we've been told by several rescuers...
The vet told me that it does. So we sprayed our yard, because our dog had part of it. We sprayed our yard twice with bleach, the whole yard, the mud puddles, anything you could think of that our feet had touched, the inside of our vehicles. It's supposed to kill it, but there is another, uh, product out there that we use on the inside of the house. So I wanted to...
Yeah, we're just going by what several other rescuers have told us.
Google that.
We did.
Um, and people that don't know where the Dog Pound are...
Yeah, I've tried to tell several.
Are these people new in town, or...
Uh, I've told a few different people that's been from here that had no idea.
They've been there for...
Well, you know...
It had to be around.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of people do.
People who ask me aren't from here.
Anyway, we are doing the best that we can.
And I... And I want y'all to know that I had the best interest too of the animals.
There's no doubt. There's no doubt that you did, and you put in the effort that you put in.
I work 45 hours a week and still do everything I can to help them.
Right, and I appreciate that. I know everybody else does too. But we can only do what we can do, and we got a good rating from the...
So then, I mean, but what about the rusty containers? Is that... Is that okay? Is that... I'm just asking. Is that okay?
If they didn't give us a checkmark, then...
But are y'all okay with them eating out of that?
I'm not, but...
They have new pails.
Well, that's good to know. I mean, that's what I'm saying. Like she was saying, we would like to be updated.
And Tara, you went out there, and I had those pails out there for the express purpose of those dogs being able to get a drink all day long. They get frisky sometimes. They kick it over. I didn't want them out there with water, without water. So that's why I got the buckets that were heavier before they couldn't kick them over. That was the reason for the buckets.
I'm just saying the rust. That's my concern, is just the rust.
No, I wouldn't want to eat them.
No, and they have rust in them.
No, they don't. Those buckets are gone. Yes, when the tragedy first happened...
No, sorry, I didn't have... I was... Didn't have access inside then. So that... This was afterwards. You didn't give me a key till after the fact, and I took the pictures when I got the key.
Right, and shortly after that, we changed the buckets about that time.
I hope so, because we raised... We got donations of buckets, so I hope you did use them.
I went to, uh, Porcheland, and I purchased all new buckets for their food and their water. Now, I made my comments on this. I don't return your phone calls because I trusted you more than I did anybody else out there at that pound. While I was gone on the cruise, you called television station or...
I did not. Lisa did. Lisa did the first one. I did not call the television station.
Well, it's working, what we're doing right now.
But what I wanted... What I thought though is, since we've known each other for so long, you would've called and got my side of the story when you got back.
I haven't even talked to the humane officer.
But I'm just saying, I tried to call you. People were running my name through the mud, and all I'm trying to do is help.
I didn't tell them that. I don't know who told them.
Well, people said... Well, I... Well, Beth Cronin, we all know Beth. She was going around telling people to stay away from me because I'm the one that let those people get in there and get bitten and hurt, and to stay away from me. Several people...
Find something else to do.
Yes, but I'm just saying, my name has been run through the mud. All I want is the best for these animals.
Okay, yes, we've got to stop this. We've still got litigation going on with the Dog Pound. This is over. We're continuing on our course, and I just want our city attorney to verify. If people are going out there, sticking their hands in the kennels, with the fact that we've got all kinds of dogs in there that we do not know their history, we do not know if they have disease, is not the little city, but at an extremely high possibility of this, uh, being sued, is our liability not extremely high?
I'll answer the question like this, Mr. Mayor. The risk of the city being held responsible for injuries that occur to non-city employees who are not covered by the city's insurance and or its compensation makes me very uncomfortable in allowing anyone, again, other than a city employee, to have access to that, um, to that area.
Thank you. Okay, thank you for coming. Okay, we don't have a forum, so we have some matters.